Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange. We will begin with an invocation to be offered by Reverend Andrew Moody, to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand?
Let us pray. Father God, we truly thank you for this blessed day. You think, we thank you for our early rising today, and we thank you for having the mind of Christ. Father God, we thank you for everyone that's present here today, and we truly thank you for Mayor Thornton, all the council members, the junior and the senior, Lord God. We thank you for the people that have an interest in developing their community, Lord God. And Father God, we ask you that the people that are here rule with justice and fairness, Lord God. And we thank you for what you have done in the past. We thank you for what you're doing right now, and we truly thank you for the future. And Father God, we thank you for Jesus Christ. We thank you for his life, his death, and his resurrection. And not only that, God. We thank you for the Holy Spirit that leads and guides us into all truth. And Father God, we'll be careful this day to give you all the praise and all the honor. And in your holy, masterless name of Jesus Christ that we pray this prayer of faith, let every heart say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for your prayer Reverend Moody. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of our council meeting held on February 8th. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved second.
Have a motion second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? No. That passes unanimously. We will move down to delegations, and we have Mrs. Sandra Brownlee with a Cathy update.
Second of all, I just wanted to come in. First of all, thank you Mayor Thornton for allowing me to speak this afternoon, and thank you to the rest of the council for allowing me to share with you. I know that you all are aware of Community Action for Improvement. Those of you who are not, we're going to pass out some great packets for you to take back with you. But what I want to come today is just first of all introduce myself as the new president for the Community Actions for Improvement Board. And I brought also my executive director, Ms. Jennifer Corchion. I'm not going to go through the entire packet with you. That is free to take with you and read as you will. But what I wanted to share was number one, that I know that we're known in the community for paying utility bills. That's what I thought of it when I first arrived and when I first joined the board. But I found after the fact, well, there's a lot more to Community Action for Improvement versus just paying utility bills. And but we do assist the community with those low-income needs. What I wanted to do though is make you aware of some of the other things that we do, and I'm going to have my executive director break those things down. But most importantly, we are revamping that organization. We have a great new team of board members. You all have just given us a brand-new board member to replace Ms. Hamid, which thank you very much for her service. She did a great job. She served for a very long time, and we were very impressed by her service. So thank you for the replacement. We have yet, I've yet to meet him yet, but I'm looking forward to it at the board meeting. But also just to let you know that there's a lot of changes that are coming with Community Action for Improvement. The government is sitting down, just money, it just, it boggles my mind, the amount of money that we get to support low-income families. There's no problem with that part. That's fantastic. The problem is, is what we want to do now with Community Actions for Improvement is not just be known for paying people's utility bills. We want to be known for also empowering the community to not have to pay their utility bills. So there's other resources, other classes, other things that we offer that I don't think the community is aware of, and that's why you have that packet in front of you. Feel free to read. And then my business cards are in there. So is Corchion's business card is in there for you to call us at will if you have any questions about it. We get lots of questions from the community every day of, why did my light bill get paid? Or how do I do this? Or how do I get a job? Or all of these things, and they don't seem to have the correct answers. I think that they're hearing it based on what the community says. So I want you all to be aware of what we do, how we do it, so that if any of your constituents you call and they have a problem with not getting something done through our agency, then you'll be able to explain to them how the system actually works. But I'm not going to take off your time, like I said, but I am going to give Ms. Corchion a moment to sort of break down some of the needed information I think that you need to know today, and also the people who are here need to hear today about what we're doing and how we're moving forward with Community Action, so that we can make a better impact on the community, and we can do the community a lot more than we've been doing before. So with that, I'm going to have a couple of, say a couple of words.
Hi.
Forgive me for talking fast. I'm from LaGrange.
Well, I talk fast. I'm not from LaGrange. But thank you for having us. Thank you for entertaining us this evening. You've got a packet before you there, and one of the things that I'd like to go ahead and bring to your attention is a PowerPoint presentation that you have here. If you'll flip back to page six, that gives you some information that I think you'll be interested in. This gives you the last several years, three years' worth of dollar amounts of benefits that we have put out onto the streets of Troup County. And down at the bottom of that page, you'll see in red the amount of benefits that went specifically to the city of LaGrange residents. And that's a pretty significant number. Out of $2.5 million that has been distributed to clients, and that is direct client benefits. That does not include our costs, our organizational costs. That's benefits to clients in their hands. And so out of 2.5 million to Troup County, we've distributed 1.8 million to the city of LaGrange residents. Most of that going to the city of LaGrange utilities. And so we feel like we're a very important part of the community. I don't know many other organizations in the community that put out that kind of money to the constituents. So we are really proud of that. Ms. Brownlee mentioned some of the additional funding coming from the federal government. We got some additional funding under the previous president, and we've also gotten supplemental funding through the ARPA Act under President Biden. So things continue to roll into us, and we're able to put more of our money out on the streets. And we have taken the best practice of putting all of our financial information onto guidestar.org. If you go to guidestar.org, you'll see our financials, our last three to four years of audits. We've had near-perfect audits for the last three years, fiscal audits. And if you are familiar with Cathy from some of our more turbulent years, that was a great feat to turn the organization to a near-perfect financial audit. So we're very proud of that. And on guidestar.org, you'll also find some other financial information about us, details about our board, the makeup, etc. But we're really proud to display this for you this evening. We also wanted to tell you that we've partnered with Dr. Tucker and his board at the Calumet Park Neighborhood Association, and we've been an integral part of their revitalization efforts over there. We've also put, I know last year, or in 2020, we put about 11,000 into that neighborhood. We weatherized homes in that neighborhood. We assisted Dr. Tucker to obtain that grant from the Callaway Foundation, and we're really proud of that partnership. So that's just one of the examples of the ways that we're partnering within the community in addition to the benefits that you see here. We also helped the Merriweather School District. I didn't have an opportunity to really work close in hand with the Troup County school system, but in Merriweather County, we were able to help them open wraparound centers. Cathy funded about $40,000 of their initiative to open a wraparound center in both of their high schools. They received 2,000 visits last school year at the wraparound center, which consists of a laundry facility that Cathy funded. It includes a clothing closet, a food pantry, as well as some other additional services. We were doing some case management at their school for quite a while. But those are initiatives that we branch out to above and beyond just this type of assistance. We're also rolling out a new housing program this year. We're taking referrals for that special housing program from all of the Headstarts that we operate. As you may know, in Troup County, we do not operate Headstart. That's operated by Enrichment Program Services. They are another action agency, just like Cathy. And we're partnering with them and with other, our own Headstarts to roll out a housing program in which homeownership is the focus. We'll be allowing those folks, instead of paying their rent, we'll be allowing them to earn stipends that will be consolidated and used for down payments on a house or another impactful financial decision that the client would make. But in that initiative, we're also partnering with Troup Habitat for Humanity. Another thing I'd like to bring to your attention is that we wrote a grant this year under the ARPA funds, and we partnered with Ms. Brownlee's organization, Discovering Soldier's Potential II, Troup Habitat for Humanity, and the Calumet Park Neighborhood Association. And we wrote a grant for about $14 million, and most of that will be spent by way of Habitat for Humanity houses, many of which will go right into the city of LaGrange. I don't know if Sandy has ever had an opportunity to speak before the council. She's the executive director of Habitat for Humanity. And they've got quite a few lots already purchased. They were just waiting for funding to build some houses. So in that community grant, if we get it, we're still, we're still on the, they're still deciding the nonprofits that are going to receive that grant. I think they're starting with governmental entities. But we did make it. We're one of the few here in the city of LaGrange or Troup County that made it through to that final phase of selection. So we're really crossing our fingers because the majority of that would go not to Cathy, but to other organizations within the city of LaGrange. That's about all I want to offer to you today. You've got a packet of information that includes our most recent annual report and last year's annual report as well. And in those reports, you'll, if you're interested in the outcomes that our clients have, and when we're serving them, what type of impact we're making, that can be found in that annual report. Are there any questions?
Any questions for either? Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I do have a question. In the Calumet area, you said that you weatherized homes. How many homes?
I don't know that number off the top of my head today. I can get you that number. I know the first year that we worked with Calumet, I know we weatherized two or three homes that year in Calumet. I think beyond Calumet, the city of LaGrange has had some other weatherizations, but maybe not Calumet. But I'll get you that number, council and gaffer.
And what's the average cost of one weatherization of home labor?
Between 30,000 and 40,000 a house, because you, sometimes you end up putting in a new HVAC system, running into other minor home repairs that we also have been doing. We started a minor home repair program to precede the weatherization program because we're finding that the condition of many of the homes were so poor that we could not weatherize the home. So we started, I wrote a grant and got funding for minor home repair that we're doing before the weatherization phase. So, yeah.
And I'm sorry, just one more question again. And how many of those homes that you weatherized, how many of them were rental, and how many of them were actually home-occupied owner?
I'll give you that information. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
But we do home repairs and weatherization for rental properties as well, as long as the landlord is willing to be liable for the work there. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you both for your presentation. We also, under delegations, have Tierra Harris and Linwood Coleman with Communities for Tomorrow.
We'll run outside and grab my glasses.
Isaac wants to get his glasses, I think he said.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be here. I thank you for the time that you all have provided, the mayor, city council, and the community. My name's Linwood Coleman, as you all, some of you all do know. And I'm going to introduce Tierra Harris. I know she would like to say a few things before we get started.
Hey, y'all. How y'all doing? Okay, actually, on the agenda, it is Legacy Ventures, not Communities for Tomorrow. Y'all already heard from me last year. And this is Linwood, my partner, and he have, we have Legacy Ventures. I am the VP. So I'm gonna let him explain it. Take it away, Linwood. And I'm gonna go sit over here, y'all.
It's a pleasure to be here. I know that this was supposed to take place about two weeks ago, and I appreciate the time that you all have provided. Many of you here do not know who I am. My name is Linwood Coleman. I have moved to this area, and that is extremely important as I go into this presentation. Being from Washington DC, working in various organizations, the Air Force, federal government, private industry, activists, it was a pleasure to come to LaGrange about a year and a half ago. So I'm gonna do a little aye before we do a little of Legacy Venture. And in doing so, the organization that brought me here provided me with an opportunity to understand and learn to love this community. LaGrange was very special for me, coming from Washington DC. And coming from a family and a background of service, it was extremely welcoming, the warmth that was provided to me by many of you here and many in the community. So with that, I was given an opportunity to come and be a part of you. And with that, I relocated. And it opened up even more opportunities to be a part of improving communities. That's what this is all about. That's why we're here today. And in doing so, we learned that first, you must know the past, you must know the present, and then you have an idea and a goal in which to address the future. So with that, we're going to talk a little bit about why Legacy Venture is here today. And please bear with me, this is the first time I've used this, but about us, a 501(c)(3) with a focus on communities. And with it, we address communities in a way of dealing with health and safety, and then proudly improving those communities so that they then can have something to pass on to the next generation. We need to understand a few things, and always it's important to understand that in any organization, it requires that you have good people. And we believe that as you look at some of the names there that will jog in your memory, some of your own community partners and friends, a mixture that allows for success. The board makes up a blend of Washington DC and LaGrange. Of course, an advisory board brings additional talent to the table and the voice in the ears of experience of the community. We continue and we look at some of the things that are extremely important for us to get into while we're here as well. We have a docs panel, and as we go into this presentation, you will understand why that is important to this conversation. The additional support, we have made sure that we have gotten key leaders and leadership involved in our request that you will see near the end. We take a holistic approach, asking the right questions, determining the needs, collaborating and developing solutions. Now, that sounds wonderful in words, but if you're not listening to your community, you couldn't do any of those top three. And then having a strategic plan that is worked on by all that provides sustainability, growth, and fulfillment. Why are we here? Well, first, we need some facts. Let's talk about that. 28% of the population lives in poverty. That's a fact. Might be a little bit more. The median household income is 34,000, and nation's average is over 60. We need to talk about economics. And 85% of the community has insurance, but that number is deceiving. 15% does not have. 30-some percent is on Medicaid. And then there's a number that we don't know for those who can't get insurance. Okay, so we're starting to understand. But the important factor here is, we live in an economy where our average rent is about $800 a month. Do you understand that the average person can actually own a home? So summarizing needs, quality of housing. Why do we say that? Because we have so many renters, and we have such a poor housing stock that we must respect the fact, the word quality housing is important to LaGrange. Family and community centers. In order to reach the people, you must have a center that impacts them where they are, at the time, and the needs that they have. And to only know that means that you must walk among them, listen to them, and then find programs and services that impacts not just one segment of the community, but all of the community. Workforce training speaks for itself. Too many times, we're going outside of our community to bring in the talent and skill sets we need to build our community. That has to change. Healthcare clinic. We all know that need is significant to LaGrange, and we're going to talk deeply about that in the next few minutes. Daycare center. We're an industry-based community with shift workers. We do not have a quality daycare center that can let our community feel trusted in leaving their children here at all hours of the day and night. And the transit system. Let's not just talk about those who are poor. Let's talk about those who are medium income, those who just want to get around, those over 65 who need to get to their basic needs. These are important facts that we should take a lot of, I think I passed something here, and it's moving slow on me. Okay. That we think about every day, but no action has been put in place to ensure it becomes a staple of LaGrange. You see a school. How many know that school? Put your hands up. I know you do. I had to learn about that school, and a friend took me to that school. And when I walked through it, I said, the Cannon Street corridor, I call it the Revitalization Project. This is the place, right here. Walking traffic, you can ride your bicycle. You can do almost any way to get to this center. I'm showing you a plan that our best friend Skip created for us. It gives you the dynamics of what we propose can be a center that helps all in LaGrange. As you look, and for some of you can see clearly, it brings to light wraparound services. Too many times, our communities don't know exactly where to go. They don't know what they provide. Well, in this center, it will provide that type of a base where many of the more prominent nonprofits would be housed. You see a clinic. You know, that clinic's about 6,000 square feet, and just to build out alone is about $2 million. We did our homework. It's a need, and there's a lot of support around it to make it happen. You see also a trade center. You see a daycare center as well. As you look at the lower level, you will see that it is made for an incubator. Why? We have to stop losing our youth. And in order to do that, we must create businesses. We must also train them in trades. Everyone does not want to work in industry. Some folk would like to use their hands, and it pays well. Everyone will not go to college, and some just don't want to. As you look here, you also see that we have the capability of building out, not that we would be pigeonholed in, in the first growth of this program. That's extremely important to all. So, meeting the needs of our community. First, we have to hear their voice. I will not say that enough, but then you need leadership. And as you see in the next slide before you, we've addressed that. Community Center, Linwood Coleman, myself. Housing and Construction, Joe Strickland. Family Community Center, Alton West. You see for our community clinic, Dr. Baker. And we have for workforce training, Josh Fernandez. We still have some slides open. Why? It is critical in any project that you do, that you find those who truly are committed, have the experience, and are willing to understand there will be obstacles along the way. And with that, we take the time to ensure that there is a true commitment. Funding sources are important. And with that, we have a list. We realize in anything, you can talk about a dream, but if you can't put the dollars with it, it will stay a dream for years to come. And as we go through it, you will see the federal, private, and local entities that we have gone out and had conversations with for commitments to ensure this project is a success, not 10 years from today, but the process is one that considers being active this year. Our request, extremely important, let's make no bones about it. We want, as an organization and the community and the city, we would love to have the opportunity to have the Cannon Street School. What does that mean? A partnership with the city, clearly. Why, some would say? Because there's a 10-year commitment with the Community Block Grant Fund. And in order to make this happen, there must be a partnership. How long does that mean? It means that I, a member of this community, am committed to 10 years of seeing this program as long as I stay healthy. Two, we want to take the lead and operational responsibilities that go with it. And then at the end of the 10 years, we would love to have complete control of that program and that facility. So if you talk about it, you had to have a timeline to show how you plan to get there. In this timeline, it's quite aggressive. Why? As you all know, there are many dollars out there right now to support this program. We don't have to beg. It's there. We have a one-time shot to get those dollars, because there are many, and they're sitting in the coffers, waiting for someone to go after them. We know that because we've already made the calls. We have sat down face-to-face to ensure that we can make this happen. In that aggressiveness, we must have that partnership. So we come before the council, and we ask for you all to seriously consider our request, and then understand that we are ready to move immediately. We're not forging a relationship. We're ready to commit to that relationship. I stop right here, and thank you for your time. Open the floor up for questions, comments, or concerns, or feedback.
Well, thank you, thank you, Linwood, and thank you, Tierra, for bringing this before us. For the benefit of the council, City Manager Meg Kelsey and I had an opportunity to sit down with Linwood and Tierra several weeks ago, prior to death of Linwood's father and the delayed presentation. But so Meg and I have had the benefit of this presentation and some conversation. I thought it was important for them to come and present their idea to the council, give you an opportunity to engage in any Q and A that you might have for them, and to get a sense of your direction as to how you would like to proceed with the Cannon Street School property. It is currently vacant, or most primarily, it's mostly vacant, since the Boys and Girls Club moved out of that facility. And of course, that facility was a city school that was, is then taken over by the Board of Education in the merger of the school system. And then when they closed it, the decision was made by the Board of Education to give that property back to the city. So it is city property at this point. It obviously is an anchor of southeast LaGrange, and very critical that it be used for the highest and best use to support that community. So what I wanted to do was to see what questions at a high level y'all had today for Linwood and Tierra, and then if this is a direction that you are open to considering, what I would recommend is that we, is that we ask the city manager and her staff to work with Linwood and Tierra on all the particulars, and then at some point in a future work session, this could come back to the council for further conversation. So, but this was a first opportunity for y'all to hear about the, some of these concerns. Any questions or comments from the council?
The Alpha Group, are they still there?
So the Alpha Group is, is Alton, yeah. And you're the only, are you the only?
We're in there, and Great Achievement, which is Ms. Renee Callaway and Dr. Duff.
Right. But yeah, the primary user had been the Boys and Girls Club, and of course, when they when they merged with the Housing Authority, they relocated out of the Cannon Street.
So they're not asking for the complete building?
Well, I think, I think that if I saw, I saw Alpha Multipurpose had a spot on your map.
Yes, we have included and talked with all the parties that are currently in the facility as well.
So they would still be in occupant, just as part of a much broader community center vision, I think is how I interpret it.
Absolutely. I'd like to thank you for your...
And one of the, one of the things that was referenced, I think, was workforce training, and you know, there is, has been a discussion about possibly housing the CDBG Workforce Training Initiative that I know Alton has been working on for a couple of years now in this facility as well.
I know we went to Ireland, and we saw the incubator there. I was really impressed when I saw that come up on the slides. That was one thing.
Yeah. Any other, yes?
I just have one concern. You know, at work session probably a couple months ago, LaGrange Housing Authority kind of came to us with a very similar plan that is not, as far as I know, there's nothing else being done.
So their, so their plan was very similar in concept, and their plan involved the Unity School on Park Avenue, and that is subject to a grant that has been submitted to Governor Kemp's office as part of the ARPA, that both the city and the county committed local support to, contingent upon Governor Kemp approving, approving that grant, which was a partnership of the Housing Authority and the school system. Those grants have not yet been announced. I would anticipate probably in the next three to four weeks, Governor Kemp will make an announcement on those, on those grants.
So Mr. Coleman, we don't really have an idea yet what kind of financial commitment might be required on the part of the city. I didn't hear any numbers or requests.
Very good question. Part of that is you have a Community Block Grant funding in place. We also know that there's a ten-year relationship, whether we were here or not. We know that there will be some funding, but most or primarily, our funding will be coming from other sources that you see on the screen. And USDA is sitting in the wings, waiting for us to show that we have that position.
What he's referencing, Dr. Gore, is the two million dollar CDBG innovative grant that the city received. It was announced back in twenty twenty, so it's not quite two years on, and that's what I was referencing that Alton West was working on in terms of the Workforce Training Initiative. So that's, that money is, has not been drawn down, I don't believe, but it's been approved as a CDBG block grant to be used, whether it's used as a multipurpose center or just as a standalone workforce center, that money has been allocated.
So we're not looking at any additional matching of a new grant, as far as we've discussed so far?
We're looking at multiple grants and funding that is available right now.
Usually there's a match.
Yes, it is.
If somebody says a grant, it's a match, and that means, you know, if it's six million dollars, then there's a two million dollar, I mean, I'm just anticipating something like that in the future, certainly open to that consideration, but I just wondered if you had any, any ideas yet about that?
Well, we do, and I would prefer, if we had to, to take that into the working session, where we could go a little bit more in the weeds, as you would say.
Sure, yes, sir.
There are other entities right now, because of the clinic, that have opened up even more dollars to bring to this table, and there are federal and state dollars to support many of the initiatives that would be in the clinic. So there's a lot of funding that would not need a match, because there's already dollars, and there's already a facility.
Yeah, I think the purpose of tonight's presentation was mainly to see if the council was open to this as a possibility, as the use of the Cannon Street property, and if you are, there are lots of details that would have to be worked out.
That's good.
I'm certainly open to it. I just want to make sure that the liability for the city is actually, we, all of our liability, we worked out before turning it over, as well as making sure that the citizens there, because certainly a clinic would be really an ideal thing for that area for walking, as I said before, and people can come in there. But I just want to make sure that the city, the liability for the city, be covered.
I do have a question. Have y'all considered at any level of leasing this property from the city over that period of ten years? The reason I ask that, because the county has this property built and appraised at one point four million, and that's taxpayers' money that's sitting there. So is that something that y'all can acquire, the funds, if you're getting all these funds, is that something you consider?
Well, seeing that we're bringing this to the community as a service, we are a 501(c)(3).
But you're, you're making money, correct? You're going to get a salary, correct?
Yes, I would. And all the staff involved would get a salary. So as I hear your, your question, it's a very good question, but then again, as a 501(c)(3), we can't make but so much profit. And in that, you will find that there's a lot of dedication provided by the doctors that you see in that list for their time, which has a value, and a lot of consultants who will have to designate or donate some of the quality that they would get paid as part of the project being successful. So there will be a giving back of almost everyone that's participating in this program.
So no, there's not a consideration?
Everything is open for conversation.
Um, I'm, I'm excited about it, just due to the fact that we're going to have a, a medical center in a community that so desperately needs medical attention. And I think so far as the value of the property, just the fact that you're bringing that kind of service to the community warrants us possibly having some sort of in-kind reduction in that, and even if they did purchase it. I mean, we need medical attention in our community. I mean, there's just no doubt about that. You know, I live on the west side, and people can't even get to the hospital without crossing railroad tracks, and they can't get there without walking in the streets. There are no sidewalks. At least on one of the streets, we have sidewalks in this situation. Hamilton Road doesn't really have sidewalks, but that's another story.
What I would like to say, just so that it is very clear, the upgrades alone, if we just talked about the clinical center, just to do the build-out is over two million. So what we will be bringing to enhance the facility clearly outweighs the reason or justification for rent, because that whole building will have to be upgraded, HVAC and all. So there will be a great undertaking, just to put it at state-of-the-art.
But you also understand, our, part of our job is to look after the taxpayers.
Oh, no, I appreciate that.
Property funds, and to hand somebody one point four million dollar piece of property, there needs to be some consideration to that.
As a resident, I understand taxes well.
I just think it's a great thing. That, that school meant so much to the community.
Yes, it did.
And to have that school being used in a positive way, I'm all for that. I don't know exactly the particulars, once again, that we can work out, but I think it would be a plus for the community to have something of that nature.
I know that one of the doctors on the list is OBGYN, not that I have ever been to one, but I heard that it's like clearly, like really important to half the population, I imagine, in this city, so.
Well, there certainly, there certainly are lots of details to work out. I would, I would remind the council, and some of you, Dr. Edmondson, you and I may be the only, and Dr. Gore may be the ones who were around when we accepted this building. There was actually a lot of debate as to whether or not we would accept this building from the school system when they offered it to us, because, you know, it comes with a maintenance obligation, and it has been a substantial, it has been a substantial liability, as the city manager could attest to, just the upkeep and the maintenance of the facility. So there is, there is a counterweight there. We, 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 when we, when we accepted it, we recognized that we were taking on a liability for maintaining the building, but the council at that time felt it was important to do so for the reasons Dr. Edmondson has alluded to, which is how important it was to that community, particularly southeast LaGrange, the neighborhood around there, and to try to preserve that building and get some value out of it, which I think we have done through the Alpha Multipurpose Center, the Greater Achievement Academy, the Boys and Girls Club. We are just now, you know, what, six or five or six years into this? I don't know how long, what exactly it's been, but maybe longer than that. But we're into it in a place now where it is mostly in need of repurposing. It's mostly sitting vacant. It's a, it is a liability for the city. It's not something that there is a market for. And so, and so, so my point in saying that is, we just need to figure out, this may not be the right use for it, but I think that, I think if y'all are open to considering this use, then the, we don't have to have an action item today, but we will ask the staff to work with Mr. Coleman and his associates on coming up with a formal plan that we can consider in a future work session, but there's no sense in putting the staff to that time and effort if y'all are not interested in pursuing that.
But I do want to add that Mountle School was just sold by the county at auction, which is less, same size, less than acreage, and it sold for over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Sure.
In auction, so there is some significant money that's sitting there that belongs to the taxpayers, so we'll make sure we...
Yeah, I think we all understand that. Yeah, we, yeah, yeah. Any other questions or feedback for?
I'm just, I'm open to talking about it. I'm, I'm open for considering it, and I would like to be the one to say this on behalf of myself and the entire city council. We are so sorry for the loss of your father. I know that this meeting was supposed to take place earlier, and my condolences.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Linwood, and I echo Councilman Gasson's comments, and we also say that we appreciate the interest you have shown in LaGrange as a relatively new resident to the community, becoming as engaged as you have, and certainly we always appreciate Tiara and all the great work that she does for the community. Thank you all. I will move to petitions and communications, and we have a number of them. We have a notice of claim for damages filed on behalf of Rebecca Elders Cameron.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, staff would recommend denial for her insurance company, this is called an accident in a private parking lot.
Move ahead.
I have a motion and a second to deny the claim. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have a planning, a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation to rezone a parcel at three oh four Broad Street from TNMX to DTMX.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Costal will present the next couple of reports from the planning boards meeting Monday.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. As we discussed this morning during the work session, an applicant has requested that a two-acre parcel located at three oh four Broad Street be rezoned from...
Can you close the doors a little?
Yeah.
Can't hardly hear you.
That this property be rezoned from traditional neighborhood mixed-use to downtown mixed-use. This rezoning request was unanimously recommended for approval by the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals on Monday, February the fourteenth. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to set this rezoning request for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, March the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move a public hearing.
I have a motion second to call public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation to rezone parcels located in the eight hundred block of New Franklin Road from TNR and SDMH to CRMX.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Consistent with our discussion this morning, an applicant has requested that two parcels totaling roughly eight acres located in the eight hundred block of New Franklin Road be rezoned from traditional neighborhood low-density residential and special district manufactured housing to corridor mixed-use. This request was unanimously recommended for approval by the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals during their meeting on February the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to set this rezoning request for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, March the twenty-second.
Motion, move, second.
Have a motion second to call public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And then we have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation to annex and rezone a parcel located at thirteen fifty Lafayette Parkway from Troup County GC to CRMX.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An applicant has requested that a parcel totaling roughly two acres located at thirteen fifty Lafayette Parkway be annexed into the city of LaGrange and rezoned from Troup County General Commercial to corridor mixed-use. This request was unanimously recommended for approval by the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals during their meeting on Monday, February the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to set this annexation and rezoning request for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, March the twenty-second.
Motion to call for public hearing.
I have a motion second to call public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And then lastly, we have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation, or lack of, I'm sorry, Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals, lack of a recommendation concerning a request from Twin Cedars for a special use permit, allowing a personal care home to be operated at ninety-nine Johnson Street, which we will receive.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An application has been submitted in order for a personal care home to be operated by Twin Cedars Foundation Incorporated via a special use permit on property located at ninety-nine Johnson Street. This request was presented to our Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals on Monday, February the fourteenth, at which time no recommendation was made by this board. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening, and there are two, is to set this special use permit request for a public hearing to be held on March the twenty-second. An alternative is to set this request for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, May the tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, which would serve to permit the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals an opportunity to reevaluate current distance requirements contained within section twenty-five B thirty-nine subsection two J of our code, as well as the method in which measurements are calculated as specified in twenty-five B thirty-one of our code.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we develop the alternative that Mr. Costal has proposed regarding a text amendment to the code and calling for a public hearing in the date of May, which he suggested.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to call for a public hearing on this application for the May tenth, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and as a component of that motion, to ask the planning commission to revisit the distance requirement in the code and the method of measuring distance, and to present to us in March, I guess it would be a recommendation as to whether or not to revise that. So just to make sure that y'all are clear on the motion. So that's the motion and a second. Is there discussion?
There were questions that we had during the work session. Have we received any additional information to answer those questions?
I don't, I doubt we have, but we can get that prior to consideration of the permit, which would be, at this point, the consideration won't be until May the tenth, so you'll have plenty of time to try and request that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Just because I anticipate there could be a divided vote, I'll ask for a show of hands. Those who are in favor of the motion, please uplift the right hand. Okay, thank you. And those opposed, please uplift the right hand. Okay. So the motion will be approved by a vote of four to one for the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Coster. Okay, moving on to reports. Do any council members have anything to report tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I just have, in my report, it's very short, I'm just very happy to hear that our bridge by Harskeen has been moved, and construction is underway, and we're going to enjoy some of the things of Troup County and the city of LaGrange. So thanks to our tourism group for doing so and collaborating with Callaway Gardens. Thanks so very much.
Thank you.
I got mud on my boots. Today's been a very long day. There is still a lot of trash throughout this city. There are several areas that have become dumping grounds for, lack of better terms, is just landlords who are setting out people or remodeling houses, and they are dumping trash on the side of the road. This must stop in this city. It will not be tolerated. I know that we look for evidence to make people clean it up. I'm not asking for that. I'm asking for people to be cited. We need to start hauling people into court. This is getting to the point where it is ridiculous. And I'd like for us to take another look at the technology and make better use of camera, cameras in these area, areas. cameras in these areas, perhaps trail cameras, things of that nature, to try to monitor some of these localized dump spots. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilman Gaskin, and I know the staff will continue to work with code enforcement and other, on those issues. City manager report, Ms. Kelsey.
Just one tonight, Mayor. This morning, we took bids on 14 acres of property owned by the city of LaGrange on SL White Boulevard. We only received one bid. It was $200,000, and the appraisals for that property was $840,000. Staff recommend reject the bid.
Motion, second.
Okay, I have a motion, second, to reject the bid. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Anything else?
No, sir, that completes my report.
Okay. We have no first readings tonight. We have several second readings. We have an ordinance annexing property located on New Airport Road.
An ordinance of the mayor council of the city of LaGrange to annex to the city continuous real property owned by Robert Campanelli and located on New Airport Road to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion, second.
Have a motion, second, to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have an ordinance zoning property located on New Airport Road.
An ordinance of the mayor council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to classify the use zone of real estate to be annexed in the city located on New Airport Road owned by Robert Campanelli to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion, second, to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. And then we have an ordinance rezoning property located in the 1400 block of Vernon Street.
An ordinance of the mayor council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use zone of real estate located on Vernon Street owned by Sonovus Trust Company, NA, in its capacity as successor trustee of the trust created under the will of Fuller E. Callaway, Jr., for the benefit of Charles D. Hudson, Jr., at Al, and Sonovus Trust Company, NA, as successor trustee for Al's Hand, Callaway, at Al, under trust agreement dated December 29th, 1976, with Fuller E. Callaway, Jr., as set lower to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning ordinance. I would note for the record that Councilman Arrington has taken no part in the discussion of this ordinance and has recused himself from the discussion and the vote. Is there any discussion from the council on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment that in voting on these zoning issues, we have been asked to consider the zoning standards that we have in front of us at all of our rezonings. And I make note of the fact that the fourth standard is whether the proposed rezoning will result in a use that will or could cause an excessive or burdensome use of the existing streets, including the volume and the nature of resulting traffic changes, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. And this has been my concern in listening to both sides of this issue, and we have had a lot of input from the pros and the cons, and I think all of us have tried to listen carefully to all of those concerns. But this fourth zoning standard is the one that gives me the most concern.
Mr. Mayor, I totally agree with him on that, but also try to weigh on both sides. I had so many letters from different ones, the residents there, and I really, my heart goes out to them for that, but I also know that the public was approved, and because of that, I didn't see where, if public was approved, how could this also be such a big thing right here? Number one, I'm looking out for the whole entire LaGrange. I really love Vernon, I love the historical area, but we have tried to attract restaurants. We've tried to attract retail, and they all give us the same thing, rooftops. We can't do it without rooftops. And if we are to grow in a positive way, the plans that were presented that I saw looked very positive, I'm just hoping and praying that our staff would stay with the developers and they will build as they have presented to us. But that was my main reason for doing that, because when you're a council, you have to look out for not just one section, but the whole section, and that was my thought on that. Hard, hard, but it was real hard.
Well, I think I need to speak too, since everybody else is speaking, but I would like to say that Jim Arrington has stayed out of this one and has given us no direction whatsoever.
None.
Not even a clue, not even blinking or anything.
This has probably been, if not the hardest decision that I've had to vote in my six years, and I've not taken it lightly.
No requirement, but if you want to, yeah, I ask for discussion.
I'm going to respectfully disagree with Dr. Gore about it being a violation of Section 4, and the reason is, you know, in the English language, there are a lot of words that you can use. They specifically use the word "street." And Vernon Road is a roadway, and in addition to it being a roadway in our system, it is actually a federal highway. So we're taking into consideration traffic, I believe, as I'm reading this, on streets, whether it's Ware Street, Brown Street, these are streets that the city is in control of. But when you talk of federal highways and roadways, we have no control over them. And it's sad because there is a very, there was a very vivacious and robust cry from the community that something must be done different on this roadway. And I have to say I agree with every single one of you. Something has to be done. Unfortunately, this body can do nothing of the such because it is a federal highway. Might I suggest that all these emails I have received be forwarded to your congressman, be forwarded to your senator, be forwarded to your state representatives? And just as a little bit of Black history, there is a road that exists in my community, a federal highway, might I add, that has been lame dormant for more than 30 years. Since I've been here, there has never been a robust outcry to improve this roadway. This roadway has never had sidewalks, ever. No curbing. Cars could just run straight over and hit somebody. In fact, some of the roadway was covered with soot and mud for years. There is nothing that this body can do to correct that. That solely is on your state government and your federal government. I would like to see that change, but given the fact that there has been no robust outcry from the community that I represent, such as the community that is here tonight, 30 years has passed by since the federal government gave the state of Georgia money to widen that roadway. They even went so far as to not be truthful on the maps, saying that it was a five-lane roadway from the Tennessee line down to Bain Bridge, Georgia. If you look at any DOT map, and it shows you, it's a highway all the way through and through, except for 1.3 miles which runs through my district. That is not a truthful statement that was made by the state, and that has never been That being the case, I call myself a Christian, may not be a very good one. I appreciate the sorry music. You know, I call myself a Christian, I may not be a good one, but I do know this. What you do to the least of us will be done to the greatest of you. You will reap what you sow. And what was done on that side, should you not choose to take up this, can be very well done on your side. So with that, I say, everyone's been clamoring for restaurants, everyone's been clamoring for more amenities in the city, and we do not charge property taxes. We are funded solely, well, for the most part, off the sale of our utilities. I need more toilet bowls. I need more faucets. I need more electric heaters, gas heaters. That's just how this city is functioning right now. So with that being said, I disagree with Section 4 based upon the fact that the wording here specifically says "street," and "street" entails that something that the city of LaGrange is in control of. And that's why I take the position that I take.
Thank you, Councilman Gaskin. Any other discussion? Okay, because I anticipate a divided vote, I'll ask for a show of hands. All who are in favor of the motion to approve the ordinance, please uplift the right hand. Okay? And all who are opposed to the motion to approve the ordinance, please uplift the right hand. Okay? So the council is evenly divided, two to two. That is the only time the mayor gets to vote. When the council is evenly divided, the mayor gets to vote to break the tie. I certainly appreciate all of the information that the applicant has provided to the city. I also appreciate the concerns that have been voiced by the neighborhood about the proposory zoning, and I am mindful of the planning commission's recommendation. I will vote in favor of the motion to approve the ordinance. The rezoning will be approved by a vote of three to two. Okay? Ms. Van Shor, will you close us?
Yes, sir. I have two items of good news. The marketing communications department is proud to support the Troup County NAACP with their MLK Junior celebration. It was held online last night, and in honor of Black History Month, we wanted to share an abbreviated version with some of our elected leaders in this video.
I have a dream. My four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. I have a dream today.
Welcome to the 2022 Martin Luther King Celebration. My name is Mike Meredith. I'm your host for this evening and also the president of the Troup County NAACP. We have a wonderful program in store for you, so we just want you to sit back, relax, and enjoy the program.
Hello, I'm Jimmy McCammon, Jr. I'm county commissioner for District 5 in Troup County. I bring greetings on behalf of the NAACP, the Troup County chapter.
On behalf of the Troup County Board of Commissioners, I would like to extend an acknowledgement of the efforts of Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr., to make this a better community, a better state, a better country, and a better world.
Hello, I'm Jim Thornton, mayor of LaGrange. I wanted to join you today to honor, to salute, and to celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr.
If your soul's not anchored in Jesus, or you wish you let drift away, or drift away.
Thank you for sharing your time in celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr. For more information on the Troup County NAACP, please see the information on your screen.
Free at last, free at last. Thank God almighty, we are free at last.
And also, we have, the second part of our good news is that Dr. Edmondson, Councilman Edmondson, mentioned the King Bridge, originally constructed by Horace King and rebuilt by his son George. It was returned to LaGrange this morning. This is a collaborative effort with several entities, including Kathy Tilley with Visit LaGrange, Bill Bullock, our assistant city manager, Natalie Hale, executive director of Friends of the Thread, Callaway Foundation, and Callaway Gardens. And we wanted to also show you a little bit of history that went on this morning, getting the bridge to LaGrange, and the voice you hear is our very own Kathy Tilley.
Today, a bridge was moved from Callaway Gardens to the city of LaGrange. This isn't just any bridge, though. This is a covered bridge designed and built by former slave, master bridge builder, and genius engineer, Horace King. We're excited to keep everyone updated on this project as we incorporate this historic monument into the Thread Trail. Today was a great day for Troup County history, LaGrange history, and African-American history.
And I also want to let y'all know, of course, we will let you know updates, but we posted it just as city council started, and we already have 80 shares on social media. So we're very proud to bring you that update.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Van Shor. We stand adjourned.